Hey, well, good afternoon. Today is February 5th, 2024. This is 3 o'clock Rowan County Commission meeting. We're glad you're here. We've been here all day so far. We had our board retreat this morning and didn't get all the way through it. So we recessed our board retreat to be here with you, good people. We'll have our meeting at our 3 o'clock meeting. When we're done with that, we'll go back to our board retreat and hopefully finish that up afterwards. So we'll go ahead and get started like we usually do. We have our chaplain here, Chaplain Taylor will come forward and he'll ask for wisdom for us. This is called a solemnizing prayer. And I let folks know what that is every time because this is a prayer that is for the commissioners. It's not for you. And we look for wisdom in the decisions we make. And so the chaplain's going to come and ask just for that. After that, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance. Commissioners, if you join me, we'll get started.
I get to pray for you twice today.
We need it.
Probably half enough. Father, we come to again today, and we know it's been a long day for our county commissioners, Lord, but we thank for the dedication that they have for this county, Lord. Ask you for this meeting to give them the wisdom they need to make the right decisions. Pray you be able to help them now in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, for double duty today. All right, commissioners, we have our agenda in front of us. I know Commissioner Pierce asked that we look at the consent item Q, and we're just going to strike that. We're going to strike item Q. And let's see, we had some additions. I think we're just adding a closed session. Yeah, adding a closed session, so we'll make that item 3F. Motion to approve those changes?
No move.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve then the consent agenda?
No move.
The second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And I did want to welcome some very special guests we have with us here. Aaron started last year with our management folks, our leadership team here in the county started leadership classes. And so they're going through that, and I wanted to introduce, if you'd stand when I call your name, hold your applause until all have stood. Debbie Holshouser, Debbie, please stand. Hi, Debbie. Michael Smith, Michael, welcome. Don't cross Michael, just a suggestion. I'm sorry, it's Mr. Michael Smith. Zach Mason, Zach, welcome. We're glad you're here. Brent Carlton, Brent, Lauren Stevens, and Rodney Newton. All right, you guys, this is some of the leadership of Rowan County, and Aaron is investing, Aaron and Javon invest in a lot of time. She's back there in leadership skills for our leadership here in our community. And so we really appreciate you guys being here. And so why don't you give them a round of applause for being here?
That's the first time I've ever seen Brett Carlton without a hat on.
Well, we hope to get you out by nine tonight, so that'll be good. All right, let's move on to our first item. We have public comment. Bobby Kemp? Bobby, welcome. We're glad you're here.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and speak today. I know a little bit about you folks. Thanks to internet, you can look up and read and find out about your commissioners, who they are, where they come from, what they believe in, especially around election time, we find out more. But you folks don't know anything about me. And I won't tell you just a little bit about me, and I know I've only got three minutes, and I'll do my best to go it this fast. But I'm 70 years old. I've spent all but one of my life, one year of my life here in Rowan County. I love Rowan County. It's a great place to live. I remember when I was just a little fellow, lived on Ebenezer Road. We lived in a home that only had power, no running water, no inside bathroom or anything like that. Mom and dad paid $9 a month rent for it. Uncle Paul, he would take me out to a little place on Ebenezer Road called Barker's Store right there at Troutman Hill. Mom would give me the okay to go. My dad had a little account there. And mom would give me the okay to get a six pack of Cokes and a box of Moon pies, and I would charge 75 cent to my daddy's account, have things not changed. In 1953 is when I was born. And in 2012, I came down with stage four cancer, soft vulgile cancer. I had to leave the work field. Let me add a little bit to that and I'll go on about my life. My doctors told me at the Levine Cancer Center, I need to sign up for disability ASAP because I was in for a big battle. So I did. I was approved for my disability in five days. That's about unheard of, isn't it? In five days, I was approved for my disability. And I told my wife, who is here with me today, Lisa, I said, we're going to get some help. Help didn't come for six months before I could get my first check. I've worked hard all my life to have what I've got, always paid my bills on time. I don't believe in, you know, doing wrong. I'm proud of what I got. I've worked hard for it. And when cancer came, what little bit of money I had set aside for retirement, you can just about imagine how fast it went away, going every day, back and forth to the cancer center, radiation, the treatments, and what I had to deal with, the surgeries, losing a rib. I've been through a lot, folks. I've been through a lot. I like that also. I thank God for all His blessings in my life and what He's done. But let me go on to where I want to be at about my life. And so we struggled when cancer came, and I didn't have a job. I couldn't work. And as a matter of fact, today, I still have cancer. The soft vulgile cancer, my doctors tell me I'm good with, but I now have what they call GIST tumors, G-I-S-T. I've had several removed. It's like an open heart surgery that I go through. They have to go in and remove them. I have some now that they can't go to. It's not safe to take them out, so I take cancer medication every day, and life is hard. But today, I want to come to you as our first line of defense. You're our commissioners here in Rowan County. You were voted in by the people because they trusted you and they believed in you. I voted for some of us. And, you know, today I'm here, and also I want to be here today on behalf of seniors, veterans, and disabled, which I am one of all three. And as you know, this day and time, the cost of living is up approximately 28%. 28%. Now I draw a little check every month. I used to make a decent income. All that's gone. Everything I've had's gone. When I had cancer, we had to start selling things off just to make ends meet until I could draw my disability. Folks, that's not right. I called one of our center's office and I said, tell me why this is. I think I was speaking with his representative, his attorney. He said, Mr. Kemp, let me explain to you. When you go on disability, it takes six months to get it approved. I said, what do you mean get it approved? I brought all the verification you asked from, they asked from my doctors. I gave you everything that I needed that you asked me for, and I had to wait six months? He said, yeah, but that has to be investigated. I said, what do you mean investigated? He said, you don't realize how many people apply for disability and commit fraud. I said, wow. But I had all the proof. That was a hardship for me. I said, you asked me a question. Now, sir, I'd like to ask you one. When the illegals come across the border, how long does it take them to get a hot meal in a room? And I had to wait six months. I challenged him to go get the file, my file, and tell me when the investigation took place and who did it. No answer to the date. No answer to the date. And we used to live in Gold Hill, and when cancer came, things were tough, and it was a long way. We was driving 40 minutes back and forth to the cancer center. We was driving 30 minutes to our church. We'd go to Unibaptist in Kannapolis, right there on 29 behind the Whataburger. And so we found a place on Chalk Maple Road. I remember as a kid riding by that property in a school bus before there was ever a home on it. So there's a house built there in 1965 by a couple, and this age came and age took them, and they went on home, left out. The property came up for sale, and we decided that we'd do our best to buy it. And thanks to me being able to pay my bills, I was able to work a deal with the bank to get the financing on it, until I could sell my place in Gold Hill that I had to pay it off, which God blessed us, and we were able to do that. But when we moved there, the taxes on the property was $914.72. That was in 2020. 2021, my tax bill is $935.53. In 2023, my tax bill's gone up to $1,365.56. That's a difference of $450.83 when I moved on to property in 1920 and started calling it home. I don't understand why taxes go up, and, you know, that's a big increase to me in four years. This day and time, as you know, buying groceries is not cheap, gas is not cheap, nothing's cheap. Your seniors, your veterans, and your disabled people, it's rough on them. It's very, very rough on them. And my home value when I bought it was a $211,000. My home value today in that period of time is up to $333,000. Now, yes, I do get the, what they call the seniors discount, the discount on my taxes, but with the discount that I got, I'm right back to what it was originally because that didn't save me any money. And we now pay tax to the fire department on our tax statements. We have to pay tax on our home, on our cars. Everything we've got is taxed, everything. There's nothing we can get out of paying taxes on. I remember as a kid, I was telling you about, we used to, the county used to pay for the fire departments. It was paid through the taxes collected from the people. Now, we pay taxes on our tax statement to the fire department. Now, not only do we pay that, we pay for our vehicle tax for fire insurance through the fire department. And I trust to say, if I'm down at the cancer center in Carris County, my car catches on fire, Boston Heights ain't coming. They ain't coming. I don't understand where all the money goes. When I started out in the job field, I worked, and like I say, I had a few things. I paid the bank in full. I never had the county pay any of my bills for me, never. The county didn't pay my bills. And as a matter of fact, I was looking at my Bible today in Matthew in chapter 22 and verse 17. Jesus answered and said unto the Pharisees, He said unto them, render unto Caesar the things that are Caesar's and to God the things that are God's. I appreciate y'all opening up the prayer today with Reverend Taylor here. What I'm saying with that verse I just read there, Lisa and I, like I say, we go to Unibaptist. We try to support the church, we pay our tithes, we do what we feel like God requires of us to do. Folks, I'm here today to tell you, I'm not saying you're Caesar, but I'm telling you, when does it stop? It's more and more and more. God don't change His laws, but definitely Caesar sure does. And again, today, I'm here for the seniors, the veterans, and the disabled people because it's hard on us. I know there's a lot of people that come in front of you, and they want to raise money for, or get grant money through the county or pay for this. Our good sheriff came up a while ago, had a great proposal on what he could do with buildings and things like that. And that, all that's wonderful. I've been online, I've listened about other people coming in front of you, and they talk about, we need money for this, and we need money for that. Well, today, I'm asking you to stop increasing the budget each year. Part of your job is the welfare of the people. Raising taxes so high is not for the welfare of the people. Stop spending money you don't have and send to the taxpayers the bill. Each of you were voting in office because the people in Rowan County trusted you. Now I trust you will do the right thing. I have told you that I also like to, I would also like to hear from you on what I've said today. Whether you plan to do something about it or whether you don't, I would like to know how each and every one of you feel about that. It's hard today on your seniors, the veterans. It's hard. Disabled people, it's hard. When you've only got a little check coming each month, and I promise you, our founding forefathers did not have this in mind. They didn't have it in mind for the people to carry such a tax load. My personal checkbook, I can only write out what I've got to pay my bills. I can't do other things. I don't feel like the county should be spending money until it's appropriately come in. If there's a project needs to be done, wait till money's allotted for that till it comes in in tax money. Our budget, looking at our budget that the county had for last year, my Lord, if I've read that, and I know just a little bit about budgets and things like that, but the income was the same thing as the output. Every money, penny money that came in was spent out. Now, this year, we're looking at over $10 million tax increase. Where's that money going to come from? The seniors, the veterans, the disabled? When does it stop? Why do I have to pay a registration fee on my car every year? I'm asking you today to put some kind of freeze or some kind of grant to help the people as to what we're not taxed so much. Two and a half percent of everything I spend on sales tax comes back into the county. When I get my power bills and other bills come in, there's a Rowan County tax fee on there. Why am I doing that? I don't understand that. Again, I worked hard all my life to have something. I don't want to have to die, move out, and not have nothing and give up what I've got. It's not right. It's not right. I'm asking you today to do something to help the disabled, the seniors, and the veterans. And I know you do things for the veterans. I understand that. But I'm talking about when you come to the table to sit down and pay your bills, where's the money going to come from? You know, we'd like to live too. We'd like to take a little vacation sometime. What are we supposed to do? Where's our help going to come from?
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. If you'll come back up here and put your phone number here, I'll call you, okay?
Okay.
Travis, you're next.
Mr. Kemp ought to go back to selling them good coon hounds like he used to. Bought from him from when I was a young man. He used to have some hunting dogs, I'm going to tell you that for sure.
That was when I used to tend to.
He's a good fellow. I'm here today, this, you know, as the county does pay studies in each division across, you know, every three or four years, and I'm here on behalf of 911 employees, emergency services. I believe that they're up this year for their pay study year. I can't think of any more important people that we deal with in my job and as I have been as a Salisbury police officer, as a regular deputy sheriff, and now as the sheriff, more important people than those that work in that 911 center. When we're in trouble and we get on the radio that those are the people that answer, there's not a single emergency that comes through this county that probably doesn't go through their phones. If you've heard how they calmly and professionally do their work, we're really blessed to have those people. But across the North Carolina, across the United States, all emergency services are struggling with 911 dispatchers because I don't believe they're paid what they're worth. That is a very crucial aspect that we can't do without, and I'm hoping that this year, when you guys evaluate their pay and you look at their pay, that you, whatever the county advises you do, you'll put about $2 an hour on it. Because there's just no way that you can value experienced, good employees. I don't think that's an area that you should want to skimp by on. I think quality behind those chairs and quality behind those phones are lifesaving. They're lifesaving to you when you have an emergency and they're walking you through how to do CPR. They're lifesaving to my deputies and everybody else in the county when they're providing information to us and calming us down on the radio. I remember as a young deputy one time being in a very bad fight and scared to death, and it was a good dispatcher that's still here, matter of fact, Bubba Gregory, that threw on the radio after it was over, calming me down, giving me what I needed, and being that voice on the radio. I just think that if there is a group of employees in this county that are over, maybe overlooked or not thought of as important, it's that group. They sit in a dark room in front of a computer screen and phones, and I'm just hoping that you will make them very competitive in their pay. It's not a lot of them, won't cost the county a whole lot to do a lot for them. I'm asking you as a sheriff, for my deputies, for the EMS employees, the firefighters across this county, that you really carefully evaluate how you can not just be, not just keep up with, how about being an original? Maybe have the best paid 911 communication center in the state, so they can attract good employees. I'd like to have a channel of my own. We have more radio traffic than anybody else, and we have a hard time getting on the radio sometimes, but, you know, they couldn't hire four more dispatchers if they wanted to because what they make's not going to attract the candidates there. We're lucky that we have the ones that we do, but that's just a plug for them guys. So when the county gives you their recommendations for those guys, that's an add about $2 or $3 an hour to it because it's sure, they are sure vital to my office and to my deputies. And that's it. I just want you guys to be aware of the important job those people do, and sometimes I think they get looked over sometimes. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. All right, we'll move on. Got an update and presentation on Euroann, Mike. And it's going to be you or both of you? No? Can we have her instead of you?
Or instead of me?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, for your time today. Really, really appreciate it and are excited to bring you kind of an update. It's been a while since we've been in front of you. We thank you for the continued county support for the Euroann, which is underneath the brand Task Force. It all started back in 2019. And why? Because when we would search online, we would see things like this. We heard it from so many people. Whenever they Googled High Rock Lake, they came, they saw these negative pictures that I remember when I was in the 70s and 80s, and I'm sure everybody here remembers those. But that is what was filling up all the feeds on the internet with images and all the negativity that was happening. So we started this back in 2019 to move the perception of our county so we could entice companies to come here, businesses to come here, but as well as people to move here, to live here and work. How have we been telling our story since 2019? We created a hub, Euroann. It's very active. It has a tremendous amount of blogs, images, and content on it, and it, everything is directed towards that. We had very inclusive digital marketing strategies consisting of social media, blog writing, Google pay per click. We developed a connector network. In order to do away with these bad images, we had to do photography, and we worked a lot with our partners all around the county in the various areas to develop these assets. And moving forward, we developed Rowan Originals and these personas that basically entice people and boomerangs and people like that to come back to us and to live here and to work here. And obviously, we also use traditional PR as well. We had these connections that we focused on. High Rock Lake, the arts, attractions, municipalities, healthcare, education, and business sector. These eight areas, we, before we went into this, encompass probably close to 90% of our community here and the people that live here. All of us fit into one of those, and if we connect those dots, everything is shared and is connected much more freely. The digital strategies, obviously, I spoke of earlier with Facebook and Twitter and Instagram, LinkedIn, YouTube, and TikTok. We have 15,000 followers to these various platforms that we use, as well as blog writing and publishing. And I've got a slide following up that would cover that, as well as pay per click ads, which is PPC on Google. The digital channels post that we did, you know, this is a post for one of our Rowan Originals, Ben Fisher. It reached 72,000 people, this video did, all across all the platforms, and it's shared, obviously, across all of them. Here's another one that talks about, you know, ready for a change of pace. It positions us as a place to come and live, to work, and it's a great place to live here. And I know all of us are biased because we are from here. You know, here's another one. Why should you choose Rowan for your home, lake life, urban life, cost of living, all the other things that makes us much more affordable and much more enticing to live here? And these are just a few of the many, many posts that we did throughout this campaign so far. The blogs that I spoke of earlier, we wrote four, we've written 432 of those. These blogs cover all the various connection points that we have here and have been viewed over 98,000 times, and that's just when they come to the website. That's not being shared off of any of the digital platforms. 43% of everybody that comes to the website actually visits and looks at the blogs. Very, very big key to our success of our plan. These are just a couple of examples, fostering dreams and impacting lives, which is the Chamber workforce, and they're Yak and Riverkeeper. Two of the 432 that we pushed out there that constantly get shared and circulated amongst various peers. In 2020, we researched and we secured a Google ad grant. This does not cost the task force, the county, or anybody. It's a grant that's done through Google. The value of it's $120,000 a year, up to $10,000 a month, and we have that many free ads on a monthly basis that we push out there to entice people to move here, to live here, to work here, and for the businesses to come here. To date, those ads that we've ran since 2020 has gotten over 37 million impressions out on the internet. So basically, all we do is maintain the Google ads that are on it. We do not pay for the media. So it's a great advantage and it's a great tool for us to use to get more people, to more exposure to Euroann and Rowan Originals and our county. Website stats, briefly, we've had over 224,000 visitors to the site. 85% are new visitors. So that's exciting in the fact that they aren't the same people that are coming back. They're people that don't know us already and have never visited us. So our advertising and what we're doing digitally, electronically, and through blogs and everything else is working to entice that, and they stay on the site for a little bit less than two minutes on average. Some people stay much longer, some people stay much less. Traffic sources that push these, obviously, is with our digital ads and the Google PPC campaign ad grant. In 2023, we moved to more of a talent attraction focus. Our great EDC has gotten all these companies to move here and to work here, but now we need people to work in these facilities. So through our social and digital channels and our blogs and our pay per click, we focus on the Rowan Originals and developing personas around the people that have moved here and now work here. And there's a few faces that you see right here at the bottom. You see Nick Means here from F and M Bank. He's one of our personas, and there's over 75 personas, and we constantly add those each and every month. It highlights who they are, what they like, and then they become a connection point with people that are looking to move here, that they want to connect to these folks. It's a very important strategy into continuing to be able to feed these companies that are moving here is with these talent attractions efforts and to bring in folks here. We have to keep telling the story, guys. I wanted to be brief today and not take up a lot of time. I know you guys have a lot to do today, but we have to keep telling our story so others do not. If we don't tell it, they will tell it for us. And so thank you for your continued support of this, and if there's any questions, I'll be very, very happy to answer any, or if Rod or anybody from EDC would like to add anything else to.
I'll say a couple of things. When we came in back in 2014, 2015, and started to create the Growing Rowan Initiative, one of the things we looked at was, and we called it telling our story. And you got to remember back in that time, there were websites, listen now, you may not believe this, or maybe you do know it. There were websites out there created for the sole purpose of destroying Rowan County. That was their goal, was to destroy Rowan County. And so if you Googled Rowan County, imagine if you're a company in California, or New York, or wherever, Germany, and you're Googling Rowan County, North Carolina, because you're looking at us for a place to put a company, all you would see is negative. Well, they just move on. And so we knew, and so what you had in your last slide was really what our theme was. If we If we don't tell our story, someone else will. And so Euroann was created, and I'll tell the group this as well. We put an RFQ out, and we brought a lot of companies in to talk to about doing marketing strategies for the county. Mike might not like me telling this, but I was on that committee, and I actually wanted to pick an outsider. Mike and I are friends, I really like Mike, what he does is a great job, but I felt like I wanted someone from the outside to kind of bring a fresh perspective. And when we started interviewing these companies, Mike and his team, it was a slam dunk. What they provided for us was so good and so innovative and so fresh, and I'm glad that we picked Mike. And so whatever we do, this is something we have to continue to do. It is to continue to tout all the benefits Rowan County from our cost of living, our small-town living, our natural amenities, lake, and agriculture, arts, restaurant, all of it, all of it. If we don't tell folks about it, then nobody else is gonna tell it, and we get to frame the conversation, don't we? So Mike and team, and especially Rod, Rod came in here and he got some stuff thrown on his plate that he wasn't expecting, because we kind of put him in charge of the money, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Instead of you. And so Rod said, "Yeah, fine, I'll do it." And so we really appreciate Rod taking on that task, but thank you for what you guys are doing. It's a great product, the commercials I love to see, so they're really good, and I share all of them because it's good product, so.
Thank you.
Anything from the board? All right, Mike, well, thank you so much. Thanks for bringing your folks, okay? Hey, I wanted to recognize Terry Hill is with us here tonight. Terry, good to see you. Yeah, I'm glad you're here. Terry's a longtime planning board member and has been involved in a whole lot of stuff here in Rowan County. It's good to see you out and about, so thanks for coming out. All right, next is High Rock Lake update. You again.
Me again. So we wanted to look at a feasibility study of High Rock Lake, because one has not been done since 2001, and that was done actually by Davidson County. Lots have changed over the last few years at High Rock Lake, so wanted to kind of highlight some of those things. Big issue is the sedimentation issue. Lake was impounded in 1928. Debris and sediment flows down to Yak and River and then naturally settles into High Rock Lake. It acts as a forbey for the downstream lakes. And what that is, is if you've ever watched a stormwater water quality device, water hits it, slows down, the large particles settle out, and the clean water keeps going through. That's what High Rock Lake is doing for Baden, for Tucker Town, for all the streams down from us. So we end up collecting a lot of the debris that's flowing down to Yak. We had a study done in 2001, well, we didn't, it was actually, I think Davidson County did the study, but it showed 729,000 yards of deposition per year. And then we do know that in the northern part, or the upper parts of the lake, there are some areas that are already becoming blocked with sediment and sealed. We looked at pulling together a feasibility study with the growing public concern. We wanted to find a firm that specialized in this, and we had four submittals, and one company stood out to us through the review of the submittals and also through the interview process, and that was Geosintech. They are a nationwide firm, and they have worked on more than 200 sediment wetland marsh remediation and restoration projects. So they had quite a bit of background in not only what we were looking for, but working with the federal government, working with state governments, because funding is gonna be a key issue for anything moving forward once we get the study. We wanted a firm that could help us find grants and some other ways to navigate those funding issues. This, the scope that they provided, they're very detailed with their scope and a lot of meetings and talking to stakeholders. First thing is figuring out what data is present and then doing a, the big thing is the survey. We got to figure out how much sediment is actually in the lake, and then what is the sediment, what is it comprised of? Is there pollutants in it? Is it more silt? Is it more sand? Because once you know that, then you could tell what you could do with the sediment. And that would be the phase three, which would be the alternatives of what you could do with moving the material. When I first heard about this project, I was very hesitant, just because I knew how much material there is, but one thing that was brought up is where the issue is located right beside 85 and a railroad corridor. So if you're trying to move material, this is about the best spot you could possibly be in. Then obviously, the feasibility study, working with grant and funding, and then the oversight of the project itself. And this is kind of some of the areas they are wanting to study. We're not studying the whole lake, we're studying mostly the upper parts of the lake, along with some of the coves that are in danger. And we've got Crane Creek is the main one that's in Rowan County. Swearing Creek is located where B is at. That's the one that's getting a lot of the media attention. That's on Davidson County side, but it is quickly closing up and don't really want to take your boat through there without knowing exactly where to drive. So we got two options here, two things for the board to improve. One thing is Davidson County has agreed to fund half of this cost of the study. So one thing would be for us to enter into a local agreement with Davidson County for this funding, and then to authorize the county manager to move into an agreement with Geosintech to provide engineering services of the feasibility study for dredging High Rock Lake. Here, if you've got any questions about this proposal.
Y'all have followed the issue with SRU. They're relocating their water intake. They've struck a deal with Cubahydro and also with FEMA, I think. About a $30 million project to move that, so that's an issue. This has been an issue, I think, that for a lot of years. Davidson County was really engaged with issues of High Rock Lake, and Rowan County was not engaged at all. Davidson County funded a 2001 study. I've got copies of that study, I've been through all of it. There are areas of High Rock Lake that are over 75% filled in now, and so Rowan County really began this question and brought it to Davidson County, and the question is, what do we want to do? Do we want to do nothing? And then generations after us say, "Well, why didn't y'all do something?" Or do we want to at least see what the answers or the issues are, and then we can decide if something can be done? It may be that nothing can be done. Right now, the big issue is on the Davidson County side, so it's not us. So we've gotten Davidson County involved in this. We had Army Corps of Engineer, and FERC, and Deaner, and Cube, and High Rock Lake Association, and other folks in this room here several months back. FERC and Army Corps of Engineer group agreed that this is a, they would support some type of answer to this. They realized this is not only a quality of life issue, but it's environmental, it's water supply, it's Salisbury's water supply. It is an issue that needs to be addressed. And so all we're voting on today is the splitting the cost of just the study, and then once they, like Craig said, the biggest thing is to figure out the majority of this infill is at the north end. Once they probe down in there and see what comes up, what they capture, they can determine. If it's, we think it'll be a lot of sand, because sand settles first, right? And so if it's sand, then that's sellable, and we can mine that and have an ongoing sale of that sand for beneficial reuse. So this would allow us to partner with Davidson County to study the issue, and then the hard part comes after that. Then Geosintech will make a recommendation as to what to do to remediate part of it, not asking to dredge a whole lake. I think there was a cost, and I won't even say what the cost was back in 2001, it was insane. So no one's expecting that. We're just trying to figure out, what do we do from this point on? So that would be what we would do. So are there questions? Yeah.
So, once everything's approved and they start, how long does it normally take?
Six months, six-month study.
Now, you're saying six months to get a contractor in there?
Yeah, Geosintech will do the study, and it'll take them six months.
To dredge? Okay, just to do the study, alright.
And then return to us with, all right, here's what we think you could or should do. All right, well, then I would make a motion that you authorize the chairman to sign into a local agreement with Davidson County for half the cost of feasibility study.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then second, make a motion to authorize a county manager to enter into an agreement with Geosintech Consultants, provide engineering services for a feasibility study and dredging of High Rock Lake, not to exceed $299,921. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Craig, thank you.
I think, Chairman, there should also be a budget amendment that needs to be approved for that. Might have been in your packet and not on the slides.
Oh, maybe. Here it is.
Here it is, the addendum of RFQ 2023-032. All right, make a motion that we approve the addendum RFQ number 2023-032 feasibility study dredging of High Rock Lake.
Second.
Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Craig. You going home now? You going home now?
Oh, we still got a finish.
Oh, that's right. All right, let's work through board appointments. I'm gonna read through all these because I think we can. We don't have any exceptions here, I don't think. So I'll read through all of them, then we'll just do one motion in a second. Enigville Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners Deborah McCorkle Curry reapplied for a county seat. And so then in the Housing Authority, Mark Goodman reapplied for the Kannaplis seat on the Housing Authority. Liberty Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners, there are two applications for three open seats. One is for Kevin Sweat, and the other is for Jeffrey Mark Behringer. And Parks and Recreation, there are three applications for four at-large seats. Jack Kepley Jr., Dennis Rogers, and Alan Fulham applied. Pooltown Volunteer Fire Department Fire Commissioners, three applications were received for three seats, and that's Sarah Barkley, Byram Kirk, and Dylan Barkley. And then Rockwell Rural Fire Department Fire Commissioners, Jeffrey Boger applied for the county seat. South Salisbury Volunteer Fire Department Board of Commissioners, Wilbur Knup applied for an at-large seat. Town of China Grove Planning Board ETJ, Jamie Basinger applied for an ETJ seat. And Town of China Grove Planning Board ETJ. So do we have a motion to approve all those?
Second.
In a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then... Financial, did we do that already?
Well, so these are the ones that I should have done last meeting when I was not here. I can do them now, or we can just wait and do next month altogether.
Let's do that, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, let's do that. All right. All right, so then we got a closed session.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we have a motion to go into closed session?
No move. Second.
All right, so, closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A1, consider approval of the minutes of the closed session held on January 16, 2024, as described by North Carolina General Statute 143318.1E, providing that minutes or an account of closed session may be withheld from public inspection, so long as public inspection would frustrate the purpose of a closed session. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 14331811A5I, to establish or instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price of another and other material terms of contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So thank you all for being here. We'll empty the room, and as soon as we empty the room, then we'll get started in our closed session.